Scott Pet Products is your local expert on developing, producing, and distributing top-quality pet products. We are currently seeking motivated individuals to join our team. Benefits include insurance after 90 days, PTO, 401K, four-day work week, discounts on products, opportunities for advancement, and so much more. Interested applicants may apply online at scottpet.com or by visiting our Rockville location to fill out a paper application. We look forward to hearing from you.
We've got a forum, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dave is not able to be here tonight. Hey Melissa, I have one bookkeeping thing. We made a motion and voted to approve buying the fire retardant clothing, and then the next meeting, we made a motion to go with the other, so we need to undo the one motion.
I assume in the next motion would have been to undo the prior motion that go differently.
Just clarification.
I guess just clarify in your minutes to tell me how it is.
I thought it on my report.
Okay, as long as it's there in the minutes.
Yeah, Nick has to leave early, so we're gonna go ahead and just move the agenda around just a little bit. Let him go ahead and present what he needs to know.
Thank you. So I had a couple of things. The biggest one is the resolution as far as the streets down by the new development project. I've prepared a resolution just adopting street names. They've given a proposed list of street names for the project. It's attached as Exhibit A.
How those streets will be town property?
So they're gonna, they have to have for E-911 purposes.
Okay, so there's no property?
They're still on the private property.
Okay.
But they still have to have for emergency management purposes, names for the streets.
Okay.
And so this just adopts the names that they had proposed for the streets they're putting in there. And it has an attached Exhibit A, which we may need to blow up because it's kinda hard to read, I guess, but... That's not your fault, I think that's how the email came through.
It did.
There's no duplicate of any of the streets in town?
No, there were a couple of names that they had proposed a change on. I didn't address that necessarily straight on in the resolution, but I do have the email.
Which street for the minute?
So... Higgs Road, Benner Way, and I guess Main Street are the newer streets. And then there were a couple of streets that they proposed a change on, which would be up to you guys as far as East Street being changed to Robin Street. And they proposed that because there's several other East Streets in Park County and near Rockville. I don't know where East Street is.
In Park County.
There's one nearby in Park County, I suppose. But that's what they were proposing, is a change on that street, as well as West Street changing to Finch Street. There's already Finch, F5. So those are proposed changes. The resolution just adopts what they've proposed, if that's okay with the town. And then it authorizes either the town liaison or the county clerk of treasure to provide that information to the emergency management agency here in town, E-911.
The motion?
Well, it's a resolution, so you need a motion adopting the resolution.
I'll move.
It doesn't have to be a same case at any meeting, since we're just doing a resolution.
Second meeting?
Thanks for changing the name. I forgot Dave was...
I didn't let you know too.
The other thing I had that was a bigger thing, we were looking at those four acres off of Pump House Road that's being farmed, that's the town's property, and we were doing an agreement with the Rose Brothers for farming it. The agreement's done, it's been sent to Rose Brothers to review. When I get it back, I'll bring it back to the board for review. But it's just what we had a verbal agreement on before, it was $200 an acre for four acres, and they get the use and farm of it, and the whole does harmless on them. So when they return that, I'll have that for you guys to approve. We had a couple ordinance violations. One got resolved. The other one I've put a stay on because the property is vacant. So I've been doing some research on vacant properties, and I found a new statute that we can possibly use for abandoned property. So that's something that Randy and I will probably work on going forward, as far as abandoned properties and what we can do. But it allows a little more teeth than our nuisance statute. It would allow us to potentially sell abandoned property. So that's a path we could go down on some of these houses where there's no clear owner that we could cite with an ordinance violation. But as you can see, it's fairly thick statute, so... But so that's some good news, though, that we may be able to go a different method on a few of them.
Will you put the question I had for you about the limit on the number of dogs in town? You know, if we have an ordinance regarding dogs...
Per owner?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I didn't get a chance to look at our ordinances on that, but I do.
I believe there's something with township.
I've got a concern with somebody that's got at least five rottweilers, and I think they make a lot of noise.
It's real close to worth risks, though. I hadn't had a chance to look at our ordinances since you and I talked, so I will, though.
And...
I'll look at those, too. I don't, I'm not aware of one about the number of dogs.
That's what I'm wondering, done.
I think there's a number that you want to reach, it's your kennel business.
That was the question, basically, how many does it take? Because they may actually have more than five, but five are rottweilers.
I don't know if the type of dog matters so much as the amount of dogs.
No, I don't think so.
It's just quantity.
Quantity.
Yes.
That's something I can look up and have an answer, and Randy and I can work on that, too.
Of course, a dog can have a litter and be over the limit pretty quick.
Yeah. I think there might be some other statutory stuff on that that might not be an ordinance.
They bark a lot when they're outside.
Why are we always picking on dogs? What about cats? Is everything like that?
I have a cat that meows and says something. If anybody wants to do anything about that. Yeah, it's terrible. If we could get rid of all cats, that'd be great. That's all I really have. I mean, I could bore you with some updates on small claims cases, but we're proceeding on them, so we got a payment you should receive from my office this week sometime, if you haven't already.
Well, thanks, Dave.
Sure, just a couple of quick updates and then a question. So last time this year, we talked about putting together information for a project for Rose Holman Student, suggesting as a senior project. So I finally got some stuff from Dave, and we talked about the depot and kind of the development of the Jackson Jackson Building area. And so when we talked to the gentleman at Rose, he suggested that would work better as a freshman capstone project, just because of the level of complexity involved in it, instead of a senior project, where they're looking more industrial development-type projects. But he is gonna keep that project in their hopper, and freshman capstone projects are done between March and May.
So both of them, the depot and the...
Yes, because they're combined. And so they'll put that in the proposals for March of '22. If you would choose to do something as a town ahead of time, if that's too long, just let us know, we can pull that out of their queue. I know, Ben. Depending on how quickly you want to move on things.
Oh, well, I don't know.
Construction-wise, we might be till next spring anyway, probably.
They move fast, and there he goes.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have it the end of the report by May, so it's not like it's gonna take another six months. Anyway, so if you're selected, they'll get in touch with Dave, he's been the point of contact, but of course, that could always change, depending on what the board decides, so... The other thing is, I had shared with you that Oprah rescinded not funding water and wastewater projects, and everybody was yay, let's go, but that's the one that we're waiting to be able to do the income survey for. And Brandy has sent the information to Oprah, requesting their approval to do the income survey, and so we have that back and can do the survey. We can't do any kind of applications.
Now, that includes water?
Yes.
So that'd be what, that originally, that's what we're gonna go for for the water?
Yes.
Are we outside, or five years? I thought it was good for five years.
Well, this is a different makeup, because some of your water customers are outside of town. And we cross three townships, it's a different makeup of people. So we have to do an income survey for just that. Yeah, it's just that we have to get their approval any time you do one now, and I mean, we've sent them what they've asked for, so we're waiting on Brandy to get word back on that. So that was just the two updates. The third thing I had was a question for the council to consider, with my hope of maybe having a response here next meeting. We've had a couple occasions now in which having a housing study or a housing needs assessment would have been very beneficial. One of those instances being a developer that we had shown, the old National Bank Building, and would have worked really well with New Hope, too. It may have hurried that application along, instead of taking four years to get through. But we've, I've been attending more conversations just about housing in general and rural settings, and one thing that I learned last Friday was that our population decline and our housing unit decline is trending like neck and neck. So when we think about, we need people, we need population, we're trying to fill jobs, we're trying to do many things, we need to be thinking about having a place for these people to live. So to me, it's becoming very evident that it's very important that we start putting some focus on that. So I had a conversation with Purdue Center for Regional Development today. They've done housing studies in the past, I've seen some of the finished product, had a conversation today about everything that they would include in this. They're offering a price that's probably gonna be a lot less than if we'd gone to an engineering firm to get something like this. So they're proposing $10,000 to do one for us, with a lot of data, which is awesome. I have about six, I have $6,000 of that covered. I have potentially another $2,000 of it covered, so now I'm on the hunt for additional $2,000. I wanted to come to you to ask if you would consider contributing towards that, just seeing Rockville being the largest community in the county.
This would be county-wide?
It would be county-wide.
Isn't that what Central Economic Development approached the Commissioners about part?
Yes, it is. They were, they were planning a $130,000 project.
They combined two counties, so two didn't matter.
Yeah, but it was still $130,000.
So...
If you don't, Rockville still included, I'm just, at this point, I'm up with my gap money.
Well, it sounds like a great investment for what we potentially could get if we do for the town.
And I'm not asking the full two from you, I'm just saying that's my gap, and if you would want to contribute.
Well, I'm certainly in favor. I, it's something you really need, I only get a couple examples a minute ago. Why would we, we could use, how long is it good for?
I think most of them, I've seen a Ben, have been like five years. I mean, unless you just have some dramatic change in your community, they should be good for a while. It's just something I think that would be very beneficial, just as... Sometimes studies aren't always...
I'm only making decisions, I'm only making motions. How about you, Larry?
I'm at up to $2,000?
Up to, yeah.
I think we need to do what we're doing. Pretty cheap for...
It's the way you play the game, you gotta have data. I'll move.
Well, thank you all in favor.
I...
I'm sorry.
Thank you. So you got, that's pretty good, you're only at $8,000.
Yes, so we should get a proposal from them by the end of this week. Looking at maybe a start time in September. With holidays, of course, it always extends things, so it'll probably be early spring before it's complete, but we'll have something at the beginning of next year.
Elderly housing, just this thing.
They will look at, when they talk about housing needs assessment, it'll be from a lot of different categories, you know, from price range and salaries and senior, it'll look at all of that, and they'll give us a really good end recommendation. And I have a sample report with me from another county, if you would like me to leave it, if you'd like to look at it. This isn't Park County, but this is what they will get.
The data that this would produce, would that be available to the public?
It would be a public document, yes.
Do you need this back tonight? Can we just, we can look at it, leave it with Brandy?
Yes.
That's it? All right, let's move along with Brandy. Uh, no, Randy, I'm sorry.
Just to report that Bullard Christ's last meeting, we've had to call out all officers for emergency response. The first was being about four blocks from here, mental subject that went off on a family member, and then barricaded himself in the house. We had to get a search mark to any of the residents, and then we made a plan, and all our officers went in after him, and there was one heck of a fight. One officer got a slightly bruised eye and a scratch on the forehead, and the offender was taken into custody without issue, except a bunch of tired guys from wrestling a guy that doesn't feel any pain, and acted like the Energizer Bunny when he got tased. So that was the first instance. And the second instance was the shooting at Raccoon Lake. So when we make decisions based on, it's just Rockville, do we really need that? It doesn't happen all the time, but when it does, there's not enough of us to take care of it. Monthly statistics are not available for June due to the upgraded computer. They're still working on that fix and haven't gotten me a response yet. I can produce you a copy of the calls listed, like I did last meeting, if you'd like, and I can present those every two weeks, but it's a lot of data to go through.
Do you have any estimate on when it will be fixed, when the update will be completed?
I don't know, we've been waiting on them to fix this whole program for the last three or four years, and we don't have much say on it. It's just, it's what the 911 service picked, and the new director is stuck with it right now, too. And I think when they get fed up with dealing with this vendor, they may look at moving on to another one. We've presented some information to them about this state police system and how it's available to all of us in free, but we need to stay on the same one as our central dispatches on it. We couldn't go to a different one than what the county's on, because all agencies in Park County are on the same one, and it just wouldn't work, because dispatch wouldn't enter information into our system. So we're just waiting on them, and they haven't given me any idea.
Is that that prior service provider was doing it for free previously? Is that the same group?
They had a, well...
Or is it somebody new?
No, this is the same CAD program, but they had a guy that was never charged for the computer work part of it, and every time there was a problem, they blamed it on a computer guy, and the computer guy said it was the software people.
Is that the same holdup that I guess was...
Yes, that's the kind of things we're having, I think.
Yeah.
I told you, the SAVE grant was starting up in the Glitz 110. Drive sober, get four, starts August 18th and runs through September 6th. So officers are gonna be doing a lot of overtime for traffic safety to use up the rest of that grant, because this will be the end of the fiscal year for the grant process. I signed the MOU with the school as directed by the town board president after the last board meeting, and we are continuing to work with the school, just like we had in the past, until further advised. The school did agree to add any extra money to it.
Can you give me a copy of that, please?
Of the...
Whatever was signed?
Yes, yes. And they, I think they photocopied it, emailed it to me or something, so I'll forward it to you.
Are they getting the extra money this year or next year?
This year. And then next year, they're gonna ask for additional in the grant application. This is what this year they're coming up with out of their budget, and next year it'll be included in the grant process, so...
And Nick, did you say you could look into funding for any overage?
So what they were, actually, that's something we talked with the superintendent about also, and that's why he was gonna amend his grant request, because it would cover the overage then. And he said, had we had these discussions prior to them applying for the grant, that they would have done it this year, but he said next year he'll apply for the full amount, so there won't be any overage cost whatsoever, assuming they get the grant, so...
But that's probably in January or so when they start finaling for...
Yeah, so he seemed pretty optimistic about it, that when Randy and I talked to him. So then it'd be at no expense to the town, instead of a, I mean, right now, I think it's like a $2,000 or something like that, overage, or something along those lines. But that request, Randy made that request to him, letting that with him, so...
Contacted Mark Wright from Kelly Chevrolet, and asking about the trade-in value for a 2,000 Thirteenth Moon vehicle. I sent him the photos and requesting the information that he asked for. He has returned a, the trade-in value, they're gonna give us $4,300 trade-in, which is a little bit above the $3,900 extra we have to pay for the car, so we're still ahead of the curve. He did advise, though, that the vehicles are now scheduled to be built September 7th, instead of the first part of August, and that they'll be built sometime that week of September 7th, is the information he's got. And then it takes two to four weeks before he gets them, so we're looking probably after the Bridge Festival, or before we get them, and then probably first part of November, or middle of November, before the outfitter gets all the equipment and license stuff installed, and they're probably on the road. I had one applicant for the position of crossing guard for US 36, and that was Lisa McMichael, and she's been working that position all week. Our 2019 Chevy truck has been using oil with no leak in sight. We couldn't figure out where the oil was going. So Alsup Chevrolet investigated it and ended up doing a complete top end overhaul. Due to the oil getting past the piston rings, and was kinda burning up the pistons, which would have ended up resulting in a blown motor eventually. So they did that, it's still under warranty, and that's taken care of. The only charge we had was $2272 to fix a tire that we didn't know was bad when it went in there. That's all I have.
Jeff?
Couple things to report. Input will be here tomorrow about 10:30 to go over there, put what you call halftime report. Look at what we wrapped up, and see if there's anything else we wanna do for the end of the year.
So why don't you talk about it, but halftime report, Brandy? On this one, we have, I was just looking at our utilities for the, what do you think that, what would we do here? Said board approval line, what were we doing there?
Um, exactly, $500, almost $500.
The loan, too?
The loan, and then I'll see what the other hundred is.
Have the loan for...
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
So 41 North, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Seems like you get time, bring it up, hold it.
Yeah, yeah. So if any of you would like to join that tomorrow, I'd say 10:30, correct? I know Steve is kind of up in the air where they're not gonna be able to attend, but if anybody else would like to sit in instead, well, please, you're welcome. Our paving project is close to being finished. They had some mechanical breakdowns that put them a little bit behind, but...
You have a media crossings project?
Media crossings, yes.
Have they started paving?
Yes.
Where did they start?
York. Let's see, Yorkston, Dewey, Gould, Harson.
That's south of the town.
Harry, did you hear, he keeps us up at 7:00?
We're working on here, here's...
Getting granted off, they know.
No, but I don't think they started paving yet. They're on McHugh right now.
This doesn't include any of those official apron we added, where they...
Yeah, 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 no. This is just for straight-up media crossings, right? Those nine street segments that we had, I didn't find. So, yeah, I just talked to Butch Crossley, they ran into some kind of issue down on McHugh. I don't know if the base of the road was in such bad condition that they kind of punched through the base, which is not a good thing, but I'll have to take a look at that with Doug and Keith tomorrow and see what needs to be done. Also, as a result of our advertising for employment opportunities, we've got about seven applications, and I've got about three interviews scheduled for the two, we're gonna hire one part-time and one full-time person, hopefully. I'll let you know how that goes, have the interview scheduled this week. Johnson or Jackson Jackson Building, I was notified that SES will have the rest of the materials removed from that building Wednesday, if everything goes well. So once they get that stuff out, then we can start looking at our asbestos inspection and move forward with that.
Are all the personal moving, though?
I think there's still a little bit of stuff in there. I know, speaking with Ken Houston, they're bringing a pretty big open door, starting to start purging, so that was the plan. I haven't been inside the building for a while, but I'll make sure that he understands it's getting the crunch time. And also, we did a cyber test about, I guess it's been three or four weeks ago now, on Wednesday. The message played, the information message played, but I don't, according to EMS, the actual siren itself did not go off. And he had an error report saying that it was an issue with the driver slash amplifier. There was a failure issue on that.
Has there been an issue with that for a while? They're finding fixing that's not working.
Really, the battery? That's what I was thinking.
The batteries were the first issue, I think we, was it 1900 or something that I spent on that?
Does, will a county EOC not?
No.
No, I said town's...
So with your approval, I'd like to see if I can get a rate on, come in and look at, give me an estimate on what driver amp issues would be the result.
They did try to test it while they were here, changing the batteries, and those batteries, I think, lasted about three or four years, but the dispatcher that was on duty didn't know how to set that warning alarm off, so they couldn't do it except on Wednesday, so...
Okay.
So I will get with your main dispatchmen. Let them know if you can figure out when they're coming. We'll make sure that somebody's there that knows how to operate, so they can test it while they're here.
Cool, cool. Those are the things I had on my, off the top of my head list. Any questions you have?
You don't want any money?
No, not right now.
Maybe. Good for you.
No, not right now.
Okay, and Troy's here with you, Mac. Do you have anything for us?
Hey, I will say that I'm meeting a guy tomorrow to get us some quotes on an alarm system for the wastewater treatment plant, because the last storm we had, we still had power, but like a surge came through and knocked everything out of the plant, and we didn't know it until we showed up the next day. Well, until we got a call that it was overflowing, so we had to do an overflow report, but there's no alarm system to notify anybody when there's a power fail or a pump fail. So we've already got those alarms on the lift stations. I think Jeff, we did that a couple of years ago, so we can get the same system and put it up there, so we can just add it to what we're already hanging, so...
So what alarm, what would you do to the alarm?
We, multiple things, we can do a...
What should we do? What should we do?
Power fail, the big one's power fail, blower fail, the lift station, if we have a pump failure, all that. We'll send, you know, we'll go to a call list, and then text and call and everything, and that way, we know. So, at your next meeting, I hope to have pricing for you on that.
Alright.
Anything else? Thanks, okay.
We have claims, sub 179, sub 8277, they have some fresh...
Oh, I don't know.
Says it's every time.
There's, uh... Uh, Mark, uh, well, Randy, we bought a coal in for a bike, coke, good? Coke rifle?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the one that's been on back order.
Oh, okay.
That you guys approved the additional preparation for.
Well, it's been a while, hasn't it?
Yes, but everything's been on back order, as everything else has. We do have toilet paper, though, so...
What's the law enforcement policy manual, Bolton's thing, is that?
The what?
Oh, it's from Lexi Pole.
Lexi Pole?
Yeah.
That's our policy and procedure manual.
Do we do?
We do that annually.
Okay. Uh, so you've got some poles.
Do we get a copy of that?
The manual? Yeah, all the police commission had a copy of. They have access to it remotely, they can carry it on their phones. I printed it out on PDF form and mailed it to, emailed it to all of them, and they can look it up anytime they want, but it's easier if they had to do it on their phone or computers, 'cause they have a certain issue they wanna look up, they just put in the keywords and it'll bring up the appropriate...
Tom, does anybody else hear the fire, but Jeff, you may know. What's a super deluxe ISO coke for Ding's fire?
A super deluxe fire coke?
ISO, ISO, ISO dry coke.
Probably the coke they wear.
Gee, yeah.
They're fancy.
I couldn't hazard a guess on that.
I think fire retardant has those.
But it's a good one. It's super deluxe.
Super deluxe, I know, I know. What we do for Decker, we did Decker size 17,045 wastewater water... Okay, that's for that... Yeah, what do we call it, limited area near... Yeah.
Did you read it?
Um, you know, I printed it out and I looked at it, I had it at the paint, but...
It wasn't like 100 or 60.
It was a lot. And I see that finally washed your paint holes, they look good?
Yeah, they do.
They look much better, yes.
I still have some flags I need to put back up, that the bases were put back on, and...
I did still see one snowflake.
Yeah, I haven't got the slides.
You might as well leave it now.
I'll move the crew.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I've got all of the bank reps for June of 21, there's...
The vows, yeah, yay!
Five copies there.
I moved through the bank reps.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, last year, if you'll remember about this time, the Tri-Capita wanted to hold their 5K run that they do. They would like to do that again this year. It looks like, and I've copied this for Randy to share with the police department, if you guys approve for them to do that, they would just like to close Jefferson Street. Says they will start at Jefferson Street, east on York, that they brought their route, North Virginia, West Anderson, North on Herman Lane, back again this way through Northwood Valley, and that Bond, Dogwood, and Walton. So it looks like Jefferson Street would just be that closure. They don't give a time if they're starting, that that's...
I have it.
To be this, okay.
We're starting, our registration will start at nine, and the race will start at 10.
Okay, so you just, you just need to close for that start initial process timing, or is that...
Well, no, for the whole, because they'll come back through, that's the start and finish area.
Okay.
So...
Do you guys bring a quarter pot in for participants?
No, sir.
No, it's up to the bid, people just bring in their own, in my opinion.
So, do you guys make a motion, will you approve the closure, just have them get with Randy, or just get with Randy if you need?
I'll get with him.
I'll stack here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now you can get it from the police department.
Okay.
Um, I've got, it's kinda late this afternoon, but I do have July 19th, August 2nd minutes. Do you guys have any questions on those, or corrections that I need to make on those before the time, or if you wanna skip over?
Or we can just make that correction in this meeting? Was it in those meetings, or was it prior?
It was in the last one, and then I have the information to be updated. That will be...
On the first?
Is that July? So the quote was presented on the July 19th minutes, and then it was suggested to check with the company, August 2nd. Was... Well, in the midst of things, when we checked with those, how they've come, and then depending on what your guys' feelings are, moving forward on that would be documented in the minute, the minutes for today. So, that was actually, I was asking Nick about that, that was approval based on reviewing that contract. Since it was a contract, we forward it to him to review. It's still a motion if we give that, we'll still make the motion. I mean, yeah, it's basically approved in the last meeting, based on his approval.
Is it relates to the actual price cost, anything like that, something?
Yeah, I mean, what, basically, was the, if they team one annually, was the final total?
So we just need Nick.
If he had any... I mean, I guess at this point, moving forward, is that what you guys want to do?
It sounds like a very, well, less expensive. And probably safer clothing, because they're being washed as per requirements, I guess.
And they replace the thing.
You say, I'd like to get our equipment myself.
Well, yeah, we got a job. Lots of we can do, lots of we can do.
Been most of the day doing that today, I got experience. A little bit, it's okay to me, I don't think you guys would.
Check that once, see how, well, the second.
Did we give a... I was just asking, did we get that order to park on it?
Well, it turns out, what's the name of the company?
Okay, so, Centos. It's voted after discussion, requested that Centos be contacted, so table for next meeting.
And over cost?
Weekly delivery, here it is, on my August 2nd. Motion was made to approve that Centos' park clothing cost for 1828, you're pending the attorney's review of the contract, is how I document that in the second minute, so, I mean, it's, um... So I'll, I can get with the technical, send him a quick email, just ask him if he's had a chance to review that. If he doesn't have any issues with that, then we can move forward. If there's something that he sees in there about fit, then we'll discuss that at that time, so...
Okay.
I moved to approve the, 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 fly 19th, August 2nd minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have anything else? No, that's a good one. Okay. Do we have any old business?
Um, I don't know if it's old or new. John Frank had planned to attend the police commission met, and...
Silly, he texts.
He did.
Yeah, we're good.
Core question centered around the future plans for the number of employees, the commission. He said, there's been a lot of side talk and outside talk. And the department feels like they have a dog in the fight, and it's caused a lot of them lasting mistrust. Decision may very well be difficult, but the commission recommends we maintain the current staffing levels.
Why, I read that, and I'm confused, when they say current staffing levels, what does that... What are we staffing?
We're at six right now.
Well, we're at five, but we have six in the payroll.
Right.
So when you define that, we're saying six, then, right, right, Randy?
I, yeah, and I think what he's saying is, we've got a lot of officers who are concerned with whether they're gonna have a job. Obviously, a lot of things, he and John something happened in September, so that...
Well, there's that, yeah, we can make a decision before that, but we have to.
But I think something else, while this will come under payroll discussions, it's kind of times that those are any time.
Well, it is, we, we...
But it's not, it's not healthy for our officers to have this much stress.
They have a DLGF. Now, when's that budget finally due, it's by, the final date, is it the end of September?
Well, they have finalized as far as those rate funds go. Those are not a whole lot of questions, that's one of the things that I didn't get out to you all today, but you'll get it before the next meeting, is the notice and the calculations, and how those numbers are calculated. And we can talk about that later, too, it doesn't really have anything pressing to do about the police department, but NDH was one of the funds greatly cut, so there'll be some conversation and reductions as well.
Why is it current?
I think a lot of it has to do with your spending, and I mean, if you ask...
Well, we're saving money.
For the money originally, but then don't use it, then they, I think, kinda question, is there a reason for this additional funding request here?
So we need to spend more on other vehicles, what they're saying.
Well, if, or if you don't have an intended purpose for it, then don't ask for it.
Can we, can we request that we get it back?
Um, you can, although they don't have to honor that, I mean, it's still your money, it's still, you know, how the way that...
A lot of times, they will give it back, though.
Well...
I think that's what happened with last year's paving, and that was two years in a row now, we didn't initially use that, but I did tell her that we will have that paving cost going out, I still have an invoice.
We have paid the community crossing 25% again.
Right, yeah, I don't have an invoice, but...
What's that, 120 some thousand?
Yeah, I told her that, you know, that is an intended expense to be used, so...
I mean, looking at the fund report, I saw the rental vehicle's actually down for the getting bounced, it hasn't gone up. Huh, well, anyway, back to the police, and that, so, so... They approved X amount of money for the general fund. And that's our total.
Yes.
And we know in public safety, we're just letting that go in there and decrease the negative amounts.
Yes.
So we know the amount we have to work, how we spend it's...
Right.
Our business.
Right.
You know what the total is?
Seven hundred.
Property valuation's really been helping here lately.
We're at six maybe last year? Six dollars, maybe?
Okay. That's good. Yeah, yeah, it's 100.
But yeah, I'll get that up, and then, of course, too, we'll need to set a budget meeting to discuss those funds as well, so... And how, how we wanna utilize that, and how much you wanna place towards, you know, you're still talking about your complete public safety, so that is fire and police, that's not just one or the other.
Right.
How you wanna work those funds together.
No, I'm sorry, interrupting, yeah, well, we were on this thing, yeah.
The police commission is just concerned with being able to relieve some of the concerns of the officers. They're also very concerned, some came on with the promise that we were going to honor the 77 fund, which we are in, and that's a big benefit to them, obviously.
Well, as long as we have the commission, we got 77, and we're gonna honor it while we can honor it.
Well, there's been a special, and we've had dispatches.
I didn't think we had to have the commission, though, to continue with the 77.
I don't know.
I don't, Nick's looking into some of that, too, and I don't believe, I don't believe that you do, but that's something for Nick to comment on.
Well, I mean, the other thing to consider is, if we lose officers, and we hire new, all of our current officers have the academy. I mean, it wasn't that many years ago, we had two officers. Bell and, I don't remember who was, who was the...
Chris Fisher.
We were down to two officers, so then if you hire more, most of the time, you have to send them to the academy, and you don't have them for that twelve group, so...
So, well, as far as the funds concerned, all we do is set the budget, and so we just need to know what we're funding for next year. We know we have 700,000 in general fund, we know that's gonna pay for all our public safety for the next year, plus two months after the end of the year, something like that. So we know that much. Sounds like our funding's up about 50,000 from what it was prior year. Plus, we had the increased funding for the police, or police school contract. So those are good things.
And I know Dave was concerned, he just wanted to be certain that officer at the school wasn't gonna just walk through the school here, that we get him here, which we do, but he doesn't follow the school's vacation, he won't hit two days.
They have to, his interest was that they rotated.
Yes.
And that they did not observe, and that, you know, like, we just didn't have one officer in there that observed the school vacation, that they just rotated.
Well, I think, yes, that's not our thing. It's, that's, all we do is set the budget, so, right, well, I understand it.
Well, you're setting the budget, doesn't determine how many officers there are, if we have a reduction in pools.
Well, I'm just saying, Randy, we don't determine how you staff, we don't determine anything but then the money. I mean, that's up to the public safety commission and you.
But you guys have discussed cutting an officer.
Well, we have no made no decision whatsoever, we've talked about a lot of things, but we haven't made a decision. It sounds like our funding's better than what we've had previous years. We knew we had money to cover six officers this year because of CARES Act. Now we know what we have to work with next year, I don't know how long we've known that, not long.
No, just last week was my meeting.
So, we, our information's coming in, it's looking better all the time.
And we haven't had a budget meeting, so, I mean, there's, there's that to take into consideration.
Right. So, I suppose we need to have a budget, we need to nail this thing down, maybe that'll calm...
Right now, we're paying for six officers, we only have five working, but if we get the sixth officer back, my plan was to have him working a staggered night shift to cover both shifts on nights, so we have an additional guy out at night. And then I'd be on the day shift, covering both sides of the shift. And then in the event the night shift officer takes off, that floater on the night shift covers those a day's off, and the day shift, if there's a day, the guy takes off, I cover those. Currently, with five guys, I'm covering both. Because I can adjust my schedule easily. The guys that are on regular schedules, a lot of them have other jobs that they go to, and they, they schedule those on their days off. And if I was to come out and say, hey, someone's so sick tonight, I need you to work tonight, it may mess up their other jobs. So it's easier for me to just jump around. But the sixth guy would be able to cover the days, and they would cover the nights. If, if we take that funding from the school and turn that into the sixth officer, I plan on rotating officers through the schools, a month or two at a time, and then back to the road, so that the guys do get exposure to the schools, and the schools get exposure to different officers, which is a benefit to the community, the kids and the officers getting to know their community better. The school has expressed that instances of violence and fights have decreased dramatically since officers have been prison in the building. Still have a lot of things like vaping and smoking, but we're addressing those issues all the time, too.
Well...
So that's where we're at with staffing.
Yeah, so we, we wanna try to set a budget meeting tonight? Uh, what? Okay, I think so.
Well, I mean, that's just, you know, your DLGF stuff, I mean, it's set, so it's kind of wherever, I mean, you can talk budget numbers for your own.
Well, we wanna go with the rate base stuff first, don't we? I mean, we probably oughta have a meeting just about the rate base fund, so maybe we can do the utility a little bit later. Well, August, yeah, here we are, what is 16?
We're gonna have another meeting this month.
Huh?
We don't have another meeting.
Well, not yet.
We've got a fifth Monday.
We have a fifth Monday?
I'm pretty sure.
I love this one. Okay. Now, we, we, we're on that for us. Me and the Labor Day, we, what are we doing? Okay, the town board meeting, next one will be seven. So you got a thirtieth. Do you folks want to get together for a budget meeting, thirtieth? I think we should, sooner or better.
What would Monday be with the other meeting?
Why?
Four times.
Well, five is kind of in the norm. I'm flexible though. If it was five, 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 okay. We say we'll listen. Okay.
So we get that deal.
Okay, so what are the budget meetings? Thirtieth, five, noon.
On the thirtieth?
Yeah.
Okay. Making us under old business or new business?
Oh, well, Jeff, all these patches, you know, two cuts we didn't rock the road, but I had some people express concern, they coughed and cornered it, and you will. Well, we're going big, so I said, well, we'll, uh, we'll get to them, but, you know, for years. Our patching varies and how we do it. Yeah, I don't know if you want to do exactly what I'm doing. Some utilities come in town and do the work. They hire someone that takes their cuts.
Like, like, uh, Vexer or?
Yeah, Vexer did it. I think they had somebody called Case, uh, something or another. But they come in and the holes are square and they, they, they back it and then they come, they put concrete down and they go with pebbles and, uh, black, I mean, it looks, I could tell it was a cut over there. Hey, especially on these newer streets, I think, I don't know what it costs, gosh, I just think we need to look into doing it the best we can.
I think what, and, and I could be wrong, but I think what you guys were playing around with was to make sure we get that base back in.
Yeah.
Which is why we kind of leave it open for a little while, keep putting back the pack. And then come back over and either put a, a cold patch over the top of it or see if we can get a hot mix to do, or we can even do the, uh, the durable patch.
Yeah, but that's just not.
Aesthetically, it's not going to look great.
Well, can you find, you, you, you perked up back there, Troy. Do you know any, any, who is it?
Cases, we've used them before. They do pretty good work.
Yeah, I was really impressed when they came in and packed veterans, uh, uh, patching their cuts. I mean, I want to look into it, Jeff, there's a couple of other spots in the north, uh, you know, south. Uh, Jackson. I don't know who did that cut there, but they never came back and put the final cover on it. And it's not very used much, but there's a big spot there. And on Eastwood, I don't know how that was patched. They did a cut on Eastwood, I think, right, and put paved the street. Oh, well, it's for our sewer repair project, which is probably. I don't know, no, that wouldn't come up there. I don't know how that patch looks. I mean, I don't, Sam, you go there and ask your point. I don't know how that looks.
It must have looked better than it was bad for a while.
But, you know, there could be a couple of spots. We'll probably come up with a list and have some touch with these guys to do, but I think on these newer streets, especially if you're doing a blacktop, you're going to need the best in the report.
It's just.
You know, I'm not sure, but. Yeah, I don't know. What do you folks think? Well, it all comes down to money. Uh, but we put new blacktop down and, and, you know, we, it's just, we should try to do the best we can.
So Eastwood, Jackson.
Well, I know there's a place on Jackson's never finished off. Uh, Eastwood, I don't know, I had been down for a year, but probably look at that Rockville Road, you know, these guys can probably know better than I or some of the past might be in it.
Uh, up on.
Better. No.
So we're on the east side.
Circle around. Did they get that spot down by Brandy's House around the corner by that church that just repaved and then it just crumbled with water?
The, uh, where it was coming apart and didn't give a patch there.
So, hang on a second. Do we have all these people that really wants to say anything?
Well, I was just.
Okay. Okay.
I was just waiting for the conversation.
All right, well, I'm done. I'll, I'll shut it.
Yeah, I'll look into it.
Thanks.
Jeff, I'll send you your guys' number.
Yeah. Thank you.
Floor is open for public comments.
Amazing.
I would just like to say, I hear a lot of gossip in Rockville and I've probably lived here longer than any of you and probably the oldest person in the room except for Park.
Wait a minute.
But it's reassuring to hear because names have been named on the board who have wanted to get rid of policemen. So it's good for people to come here and hear that that's not happening. It's reassuring in this day and age. As all of the things the police have to worry about, they shouldn't have to worry about whether they're looking for another job. And we shouldn't have to learn or worry about training new people and spending a lot more money. So I appreciate the comments.
Well, I appreciate your comments saying, now I'm a member of the board or I want to get rid of anybody, which is probably a lot of.
I said gossiping.
Oh, yeah, the gossiping. You know, it's been talk about budget. And, 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 uh, you know, we kind of got into the sixth officer. I was just thinking a minute ago, looking at Randy and asking if I might ask him now. You know, we got into the sixth officer because the one issue with the, the officer's been on administrative leave, uh, and then this, well.
We have the CARES money.
Yeah, we have CARES money, but so we, we've, uh, we, we increased our, our, our department by one. And now we have to determine, can we continue to do so? And the numbers, from what I'm hearing, are looking better because we are getting about another fifty thousand in our general fund. Of course. Well, so, yeah, and plus our school contract is a little better. So things are looking, uh, pretty darn good for affordability. Yeah, I don't think, I, I don't, the board bigger told me that one, get rid of anyone, it's just, well, can we afford them? Yeah.
Does, do you, Jeff, expect that this, and the increase is going to continue? Or is there?
There's no.
There's no?
None.
Well, that's all based on rolling the average of net asset value and I think they assess a quarter of the county every year, do an actual assessment. And then so every four years, one quarter gets a true market value. And then it's just an average for the other three quarters of the county. But the values of homes obviously have been going up property in general and probably going to continue for a while with the darn inflation.
Next year, yeah, I think they came out at the next year and a half to two years, they expect.
So.
Well, the town homes should certainly be helping.
Well, that would help. New sewer going out before you want another year, so maybe that raises, of course, that's not like terrorism. Yeah. Anyway, anybody else want to start that? Yeah.
Charles Park.
No.
Actually, I, I do have a question.
Okay.
I, I believe that it was discussed in the council meeting, that the possibility of laying officer off was discussed in a public meeting.
Well, possibility.
So that is where that comes from?
Yeah, okay, I just kind of took that when we're in with it, I suppose, but, uh.
So, Moro Chief, may I ask you some questions? Were you asked by somebody to prepare a list of seniority in the event that we did have to lay somebody off?
No, I did that a while.
Okay, so that was something that was discussed and that's where that concern comes from, from certain employees. So to say that it wasn't discussed is not a true statement.
Wow, whoa. Yeah, we're talking about affordability, you know, it's all we talk.
I, I understand that completely, but to dismiss it like it didn't happen.
I'm not saying it didn't happen. I'm saying we never talked about eliminating, we're talking about can we continue with the six. I mean, we kind of walked into this or we're forced into this because of circumstances a year ago.
Absolutely.
And, and, uh, so here we are, we got our CARES money for this year. And so, okay, we're good. We, uh, we, the board knew at the end of this year, then towards the end of the year, we're going to decide, can we do it for this year? You know, it's, um, and that's just it. I mean, so, you know, we're not trying to hide anything. Just, uh, trying to figure out where to budget it.
I believe the question was also posed at the beginning of this year, was the sixth officer sustainable? And I believe it was presented to.
Well.
That, that it was.
For the year.
And I understand that you're, you're questioning that now, is it or is it not? Um, I think it would be difficult for somebody to accept a position saying that it is funded, but we don't know if it can be funded a year later.
Well, I have to go back a little bit to the exact, but, you know, all I remember, from my memory, we knew it was affordable through the year and.
So it basically hinges on criminal litigation with another officer that may or may not get continued for a fifth time.
Well, there's that issue, yeah. But, no, at this time, it all hinges on, on the budget, because I think the board, we can't afford, well, I'm speaking for myself at this point. But if we can afford a sixth officer, that's great. The numbers that we have at this time appears to be affordable.
Yes.
Three or four years, I don't know. Again, you know, we could be in a situation where it's not. But based on what we know right now, it, it seems affordable.
Well, last year when we did it, we knew that that CARES money was only going to be available for a year. And to utilize it for that extra officer, knowing that we didn't, we, it wasn't going to be in the budget. We knew it was a one-time, one-year CARES Act money.
Right.
I mean.
Well, well, you, you're the most reasonable, I think, is. I don't, I don't know what the order is.
Chris Fisher was the last.
Okay, he was the last.
Okay. There's some question about. Seniority based on the fact that he had time before and he returned. Was approved to be hired before his two years of absence was up and gaining back his seniority.
Well, you know, I, I, I guess my advice this time, uh, wait till we have a budget meeting and we can talk about, hopefully all five of us will be there. And, uh, we'll have a much better idea, but, uh, I'm, I'm very positive at this point.
So you're saying you'll have a decision at the budget meeting?
Well, budget meeting, we can make decisions, can we not believe? It's technically, we can either vote, so we can actually make decisions there and then vote. That's possible.
That's going to be prior to the September date also.
It'll be prior to September.
Fourth. And I just, I set my hearing for October seventh, so.
Okay.
If that changes anything, that's, I'll advertise it at the end of September and set the hearing for October seventh.
Okay. But yeah, so we, we need to have our budget meeting and see what the board thinks.
Well, then the other question is, regardless of the outcome of the September, if the sixth position is funded by the school, then do you continue with the sixth position?
We, well, do we budget for the sixth?
Correct.
We budget.
Right.
They are.
But that's also based on a grant that the school applies for annually.
Right. Well, I just.
That's a variable that you don't have to take into consideration.
That's not going anywhere.
No.
I'm lying.
No, it's not going to happen.
Throw a Collins.
I, I want to keep the sixth officer. That's my opinion.
I certainly don't want to lose one.
Don't want to lose any.
I mean, there is, you know, it is very real threat for it every day that they go out. Statistically, maybe the odds are in their favor, but domestic situations are the worst and you never know what's going to happen.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Can I speak on what she said earlier about these officers worrying? So basically, if you have an officer that's worried he's going to lose his job and he starts doing a application, and you lose three of them, where are you at then?
Come on, good spot, obviously.
So dragging them out, I guess, is what I would be on their behalf asking is harder on them. And harder on them to perform their duties if you're not giving them an answer in a reasonable time.
Well, again, we don't have, we, we've had our numbers now for about a week apparently.
And, and I guess it doesn't help, I understand, the worry. I would just have to say, it's business as usual right now. We've got a sixth officer. There's not a discussion right now. You carry on as if that's what it's going to be, but I know, I know we go down to go to sleep, it's still in their mind all the time.
Right, but I just heard, well, the hearing's not till this date, so basically you guys are waiting to hear a verdict on the officer's not working right now to make a decision on if you're going to keep some.
Well, we know we have what's available now. We know that. It's gone up fifty thousand dollars in the general fund. That's where we come up with the money and pay, same. You know, that's outside of the public safety fund, two point nine, it pays off my payroll, so that's a separate issue, but, but, uh, so that's a good thing. I mean, we just found out, I just found out tonight, we have another fifty thousand dollars to work with. So that's a pretty big deal. So the thirtieth will be the meeting. It sounds, if I can't say positive.
Sounds like you make a decision when?
Based on numbers, we, we can, we can do this. But yeah, but yeah, I feel bad, you know, we haven't meant to drag this out, but I guess.
That's not our fault. It's been dragged out.
Well, maybe there's more said here and there that shouldn't have been said. I don't know. But it sounds like we can resolve it pretty darn clear.
You said that budget meeting for what time?
Thirty and five. Anybody else?
Paul, I'm taking a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I move.
Sir?
Paul in favor?
Aye.